I'd like to welcome you to the September 21st, 2020 Virtual Town Hall Meeting. I apologize that we are running a few minutes late here. We said we had some technical difficulties, but now we are good to go. So I appreciate you waiting for us, and we do apologize for that. Tonight, we're going to be discussing and answering information about real estate taxes, school finance, and levy-related questions. So we're going to be sharing a lot of good information with you, and we do appreciate all of those that have submitted questions already. We're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves. Again, I'm Doug Cozette. I'm the Superintendent of Belbrook Sugar Creek Schools.
I'm David Karpenter. I'm a School Board President, and in my fifth year on the school board.
I'm Kevin Lyman, the Treasurer CFO, Belbrook Sugar Creek Schools.
And I'm David Graham. I'm the Green County Auditor, and I was hoping that if there were any tax questions, that I would be able to address those for you to the best of my ability. I know with the reappraisal, everything's still kind of moving, but hopefully we can get you some good answers.
And we do appreciate David Graham coming out tonight, so thank you very much for being here. And also, we have someone else here. That's, I'm sorry, Janess, Ms. Sigmund?
I'm Janess Sigmund. I'm the Manager of Business from Belbrook Sugar Creek Schools and a community member in Sugar Creek Township.
And she's going to ask the questions for us. So again, I apologize for interrupting right there. So we're going to do two sections tonight. So the first part are going to be questions and answers with David Graham, our County Auditor. And then, once we have those questions done, we're then going to roll right into the school-related questions. So David, or Janess, go ahead and end the questions. Thank you.
So here's our first question for the auditor. What kind of impact will the reappraisal have on my taxes?
So generally speaking, it's safe to assume if your value goes up, your taxes are also going to go up. But they're not going to go up by any percentage. Again, not getting into all of the inside and outside or voted millage discussions that we've done in the past. It's, the inside millage is the only thing that grows, and it represents about 12% of your total tax rate that you pay. So as value goes up, the taxes on that inside millage goes up, but the other 78% of the levies, the tax rate is actually reduced so that they generate the same amount of money. So assuming that your average increase is about 11% in a given area, if your value increased by more than 11%, then your taxes are going to increase more dramatically than what they would. Based on my early projections, I'm looking at probably about a 3% increase in taxes based on an 11% average increase in value. So I don't know if that, that's a tough question to answer when you answer it from the perspective of how will it impact my property? I will add, though, that we are building a application on our website that, once we get the values out, that hopefully you'll be able to put your value into this application, and it will estimate what your taxes will be next year. But that's still a work in progress.
Okay, for our next question. I see a lot of new construction around the district. How does this impact my taxes and the amount of money the school district receives?
Okay, so in terms of the amount of money that the school district receives, that's easy. They get more money on new construction. New construction adds value at the current tax rate. So there is no reduction in the effective tax rate to offset that. So when you have that new construction, that does generate additional revenue for this, not just the school district, but for all of our political subdivisions. The question becomes, does that increase in revenue offset the increase in cost of providing those additional services? So.
I'd have a follow-up with that if you don't mind. So let's say that I'm building a new house, and in March, I'm going to move in in March of 2021. When does the school district first see revenue from that new construction?
Right, so taxes are billed a year to rear. So the taxes that were being paid during 2020 are for what existed as of January 1st, 2019. Even if that house was completed by December 31st, 2019, we go back to that specific date of January 1st. So in this case, where you're saying you're building a house right now, it would not be on the books until January 1st of 2021. So you wouldn't pay taxes on that additional value until 2022.
And the district would receive money, then, in January of 2023?
No, they would receive it in 2022. So it's one year to rear. So we would go back January 1st to 2021 would be the year, you know, assuming you're building it this year and it's completed this year.
Okay.
Okay, for our next question. When does the school district know how much money it will receive from taxes in a given year?
Well, we provide estimates based on historical knowledge of people's delinquency rates, for lack of a better term, and we build those into our models. We know what the values are. So right now, if you're going to ask me, when could I tell you what taxes would be levied, verbatim, to an exact penny? It will be after tax rates are certified in December, usually the last week of December. But our projections are usually pretty good. And, you know, like I said, we're already working on them. As we get closer to having final values set, it makes it that much easier to estimate those tax revenues.
And of course, things like delinquencies play into that, too. When you're talking about how much does the district know, how much they're going to receive for the taxes and revenue?
Yeah, correct. And we're not seeing it in the current pandemic economic downturn. But when we had the economic downturn in, you know, or the recession in, what, 2007, 2008 timeframe, we saw a significant increase in delinquencies, especially in certain areas. So, you know, that does impact a government entity's ability to provide services if they're not getting all the revenue that they expect to get.
Okay, this is a two-part question. Can you explain millage, and how much is a mill worth in Belbrook Sugar Creek?
Okay, so that's going to be a tough one, because I didn't bring numbers with me telling me what the total value was. But the first part, a mill is equal to a dollar of tax for every $1,000 of assessed value. So if you, and just a quick example, if you had a house that was appraised at $100,000, you don't pay the tax on the appraised value, you pay it on the assessed value, which is 35%. So first thing you have to do is take that $100,000 appraised value, multiply it by 35% to get the assessed value of $35,000. From there, you apply that one-mill tax rate to that, and a mill is, like it said, a dollar of tax for every $1,000 of assessed. So the math ends up being $35 on a one-mill levy. Now, in terms of what one mill would generate in a given taxing district, I'll be happy to answer that question. If you want to contact me in the office, unfortunately, I don't have evaluation information here with me to do any of those calculations.
Okay. Can you explain House Bill 920 and how it impacts school districts?
Yes, shortly, or do you want the long answer? So House Bill 920 takes all of the voted levies and creates an effective tax rate. So in essence, what House Bill 920 is trying to do is to keep somebody from having a tax increase because the value of their property went up. And probably the best way I usually explain this on the phone is to go through an example. If Green County has a fire levy, and it's a two-mill levy, and just voted in, and there's only one property in the county, and it's my property, it's appraised at $100,000. So going through the math that we did earlier, that levy would cost me $70 per year. I come along and do my statutory duty, and I reappraise the property, and I increase the value from $100,000 up to $150,000. That two-mill levy will actually have a reduction factor applied to it that will reduce that effective tax rate down to 1.3 mils, so that that levy still generates $70 a year. Now, the reasoning behind this is that just because your, the value of your property increased, doesn't mean it costs the fire department more money to come put, to protect your property. So, you know, these are the factors. That is, in a nutshell, House Bill 920. Obviously, it becomes a lot more complicated, but just from a theory standpoint, and going back to, you know, most levies are voted levies that are subject to this tax reduction, so that that levy generates the same amount of money it did in the prior year. Again, I do want to reiterate, new construction is not, does not cause that tax rate to reduce. That does result in additional revenue.
Okay, I have a final question for Mr. Graham. You were alluding to this earlier. Could you please explain to us, what is the difference between inside and outside millage?
Okay, inside millage was established by law. It was never voted on. Prior to 1933, there was actually 15 mills of inside millage available. Due to the Great Depression and everybody losing their house due to foreclosures from not having delinquent taxes, they reduced that down to 10. So every taxing district shares in that 10 mills that was in existence in 1933. So inside millage is not subject to any reduction factor, but the maximum that inside millage can be in any taxing district is 10. So if you were to look at taxing district L-35 or Belbrook City, their effective tax rate is about 80 mills. So 10 of those mills will move in direct correlation as value changes. If your value goes up 10%, your taxes go up 10% on that inside millage only. Your voted levies are still subject to House Bill 920.
Okay, thank you. Now we have some questions for the school district. Can you tell us a little bit about the levy?
Okay, I think I can take that one.
Yep, Mr. Lyman.
Issue 21 is a 5.7-mill operating levy on the November 3 ballot, and it would raise $3.3 million approximately for the school district per year. We would start receiving that money with the tax settlement and advance draws from, say, January to March of 2021, if it were to pass this time around. A taxpayer would pay $199.50, or that's per year, or $16.63 per month, per $100,000 of the auditor's appraised market value of a residence. And an operating levy is the type of levy that goes to fund the regular operations of a school district, the staffing, the maintenance, supplies, equipment, transportation, things like that. It is not a bond issue, which is frequently used to build a building or that kind of thing. So that is, in a nutshell, what we have on the ballot November 3rd.
Okay, well, can you tell us, what is the financial situation of the district?
Well, the five-year forecast is a document that the state requires a school district treasurer to do twice a year, and it's due May 31st and November 30th. This forecast gives us an outlook into the future and also three years of history. So we have a line item that would have three years of history and five years of future predictions. I always say many, many factors play into that, the further out you go, the fourth and fifth year. Don't rely on the preciseness of a forecast that far out, because the state only has a two-year budget. We get state funding. We don't know what we're going to get. And even if they have a two-year budget, they can cut us in the middle of it, as we're finding out now. So there are many things that can happen. You can have a pandemic, or, you know, you're not sure what's going to happen with negotiations and many other items. So our forecast particularly goes into the red in the general fund at the end of the '22, '23 fiscal year. And I'm not talking about an operating deficit. I'm talking about cash in the red. We're out of money with things as they are right now, with no levy passing, and keeping in, into our forecast, all the cutbacks that we've made up until now, our forecast is in the red starting January, I mean, June 30th, 2023. If you look at the end of that five-year forecast, the end of the '24, '25 fiscal year, we are $8.1 million in the red. I also wanted to, I don't know if this is one of the questions, but I wanted to mention the different statuses that the state can put us into financially. We, last year, were in fiscal precaution, they called it. The next step is fiscal caution, then fiscal watch, then fiscal emergency. If a district gets into these last couple statuses, you are looking more and more into state control of your school district rather than local control. The state then comes in, as you get into big-time fiscal distress, and says, you need to start heading towards state minimums. This is the figure you need to cut. This is where you need to be. They don't totally dictate what you do, but they do, you know, direct you in many of those ways. And there's much more reporting that the district needs to do in those areas.
Mr. Lyman, can I interrupt just?
Sure.
So, you know, we were in fiscal precaution in, right before the last levy.
Right.
Right? So we were in fiscal precaution. We are no longer in fiscal precaution because we have put the plan in place to make all of those reductions.
Right.
Right. But we could be put back into fiscal precaution, once we enter, what, another fiscal year, or?
Yes.
Or another year?
Yes, another year. And, and it's a lot more reporting requirements. And the state starts asking us for plans. What are you planning to do? Don't tell me, don't talk about a levy, because we don't know that that'll pass. We want to know what you're going to do with cutbacks and things like that.
It's all based on reductions and so forth, because you can't assume you're going to pass a levy from their perspective.
Right.
Right, from ODE's perspective.
And when you talk about, I want to spend a little bit of time on this question, because this is really important. When you talk about our district in particular, and pardon me, because those of you at the table have heard this many times, but our district does not have a school district income tax, and we have very low state funding compared to other school districts, because our district is deemed to be a wealthy district with residents' average income and average property values compared to other districts in Ohio. So with the formula the state uses to fund school districts, they lower our funding because they deem us to be a district of residents who can foot more of the bill than an average school district. So with that in mind, we don't have many options in our district when we get into fiscal distress. We either have to make cutbacks or attempt to pass a levy, pretty much our only two options for major funding. And I do want to note that if the levy passes, we are looking at a balance at the end of our five-year forecast in the $4 million range, and that is what our performance audit that was conducted last year recommended to us as a higher end of their recommendation for a cash fund balance for a district of our size. So we, I've been asked the question, if this levy passed, how long would it be till we need another one? The way the forecast looks right now, it'd be quite a long time for that.
So how did the Belbrook Sugar Creek Schools decide on the amount needed?
The district, the needs haven't gone away for the district, and the amount of the levy is the same as it was the other two times, because the need has not gone away. So when you consider the reductions that we've already made of $4.8 million over these last four phases, it really is the lowest amount that we could, that we could ask for in order to avoid further reductions that we'd need to take. We, of course, met with the superintendent and the treasurer, asked for a recommendation. Their recommendation, of course, is that we go for the minimum amount that we really need in order to avoid further reductions.
And really, just to, just to add to some of those things that you're saying, just to, again, to provide financial stability for the school district is why the levy is needed now and not waiting. Because again, if we wait, you know, until next year to pass a levy, then you lose a whole year's worth of funding, because funding is based off of calendar years, even though our budgets are fiscal years, but they're generated over calendar years. And really, to protect further cuts and reductions of why the levy is really needed now and not to wait. So, you know, we're really at a crossroads here of, you know, we've had four phases of reductions, and really, that the last phase really started to impact the classrooms directly. And so I guess we really are seeing kind of the situation we're at right now is, it's really hitting the classrooms directly with some of those things, such as K-5 STEM and ART that we had to reduce. Again, that was part of that fiscal precaution plan that we had to submit to ODE-Hod, Department of Education, to get us out of the red, it'd been next fiscal year at that point, because we were in a different fiscal year back in January. You know, the other piece, you know, to why the levy is needed now is, again, if you're looking at the reductions from the state, and then we might go into this later, I don't know, but, you know, we've had some reductions from the state and, you know, over about $1 million from last fiscal year and this fiscal year, and just, you can't rely on the state to properly fund the school district. So fortunately or unfortunately, it comes down to local taxpayers to support the school district financially and what kind of school district that we want.
Okay, our next question. The postcard we received yesterday lists the 14 areas affected during the 2018-2022 period. If the levy would pass, how would these areas improve? In other words, what will the levy pay for, and how will BSS's CUP statistics be affected?
Yeah, so again, the, the postcard, it said yesterday, but whenever we got that, I think it was last week, the district sent out a postcard, and I don't know if we were able to show that on the screen, because, but this is the district postcard that was sent out, and these are the facts about issue 21. And, you know, some of the facts on there, I think that they were talking about how would these areas improve if the levy would pass. In other words, you know, so some of the things, the program cuts that we talked about and that we were talking about at the last, at the last board meeting, K-5 STEM that's on here, K-6 ART, those are Phase 4 reductions, K-5, K-6 ART. What else is Phase 4 reductions? Busing, high school busing being eliminated, and then 85 sports clubs, advisors, department chairs, and then also librarians. So those are some of the things that are going to be, that were cut for this school year. And, and, I'm going to bring that over here.
We have a bigger version of it?
We've got a bigger version of it over here with our helper, Liberty. Thank you very much.
Hi, yeah.
Nope, you're fine.
Thank you so much.
Good.
Thank you. Yep. So that is, so that's just a bigger version of the facts about issue 21. Again, everybody in the school district should have received that last week. Because some of the other things on here, you know, there's pay freezes. Everybody in the entire district this year took a pay freeze. That includes STEPS also. All staff took a reduction in insurance benefits, starting in 1920. That was last year. We've had about 11% reduction in teaching staff since 2018. The per pupil spending, about $530 less than similar districts, and about $1,100 less than the state average. District has 17 less teachers compared to peer districts, has seven less administrators in similar districts from state average. I know I'm going through these really fast, but again, these are all on that postcard, and they're also on our website. So again, if we can't read them on here, and if you didn't get the postcard, it is on our website under the levy section. School district, school teachers and staff are paid less over their careers compared to local peer districts. 44% of our buses need to be replaced. 90% of our computers are in their fourth year of life or 90% of our computers are in their fourth year of life or older. And our per sque, per, per sque, per square feet, I wanted to say it all in one word there, per square foot is 13.5 less of facilities expenditures. And then our resident tax effort, which I think we'll talk about a little bit later, is below the state average and local peer average. And then are those reductions I talked about from the state were about a million dollars. So, how some of those things will be impacted, unfortunately, you know, the per pupil spending, it's going to be even more, even, even bigger gap there because of our reductions in our, in our staffing costs and so forth. The other things that are going to be impacted are we, the board, decided at the last board meeting to bring back K-5, and this is if levy passes in November, bring back K-5 ART, K-5 STEM, high school busing, when we're able to find bus drivers for that, for those routes, school librarians, because we reduced by half this year. And then next school year, 2021, we're going to bring back sixth grade ART. I don't know if there's anything else.
Some clubs.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
A lot of clubs, some of the extracurriculars, kind of activities that come along with the supplemental positions. One of the other cuts that the teachers took were associated with supplemental duties that they had finished during the last part of the school year last year, but forego, choose to forego the, the income associated with that. It was a very gracious, gracious move on their part to be able to do that. And so, that, that really is one of the, demonstrates, you know, their commitment to our district as well.
Yeah, I believe that was our Phase 2 reduction, so about a million dollars from those foregoing, those raises in steps, and then of not filling a couple positions also. But yeah, so 85, we, 85 clubs and sports and advisors and apartment chairs positions were eliminated. We would bring those back if the levy would pass. But we wouldn't bring back all the Phase 4 reductions because again, anything you bring back, you then have to add that to, and accumulates every year of those additions back on. So, really, it would, it would bring back those things, but it'd also protect further cuts and reductions with the passage of the levy. So, I think I answered down. If anybody else wants to add anything to that?
Well, I was just going to say a little more specifics about the state cut.
Okay.
Around May 1st, we were notified that we would be cut $657,000 from the state. And I assumed that that would be for the coming fiscal year of 2021. And then we were informed that, no, you have two months left, May and June in this 1920 fiscal year, and you will be cut $657,000, to which I responded, we don't get that much money in two months from the state. So, the state said, well, you will not receive any funding in those two months, and you will owe us money. So, we had to, we had to refund to the state money they'd already sent to us prior to that. Then, we start this fiscal year we're in now, 2021. No one said anything, at least that I caught, about the funding yet being settled for that year. But we are still at the same level that we ended 1920. So, what we had projected to receive for this year we're in now was also cut by that same amount, that's 657,000. So, in effect, we're at 1.314 million, if I did my math right, $1,314,000 cut out of approximately $6 million that we receive each year from the state. So, that turns out to be about $17,000, or 17%, I mean, of our state funding for a year.
Again, it makes it extremely challenging to know how to budget when they, you know, come in in May and reduce from that fiscal year. It's extremely challenging.
One of those other reasons why it's really important for us to have some emergency fund left at the end of each fiscal year because we don't know when those kinds of things can happen.
Right, and again, you know, I've heard questions in the past of, why don't we, you know, why doesn't the state help us out? And why don't we go to the state for more money? Well, you know, this, these cuts are a prime example that if things aren't going well at the state, they're, it's going to trickle down to the local community, and those are things that we have no control over. You know, the benefit of our own taxes locally is we have control over those taxes. We don't have to rely on anybody at the state or their level of funding or their decision-making or anything else that's going on in the state. You take care of yourself within your community and really, it impacts, you have much more control over what's going on in your community rather than relying on somebody else, you know, at a faraway place like Columbus or a faraway place like DC. So, you know, those principles out there.
Well, and at the same time, you know, Kevin referred to us being a wealthier district. We're in what, between 5% and 6%?
Right.
In the top 5% and 6% with, of all the districts in the state. They're not going to look at us and say, oh, we feel bad for you and we'll help you out. You know, if we're, you're in a financial situation, they're very much going to say, you know, you need to take care of this on your own, and we should.
Right.
And I always like to note that the 5% or 6% means that we're in the top 5% or 6% in the state in average residents' income and property values. If, I always feel like if that's not mentioned, it sounds like we are a wealthy district in the top 5% or 6% of the state. It sounds like we have a lot of money as a district, and that's not, not the case.
No.
The residents and the property is not the school district.
Yes.
That's right. When they're talking about property wealth and income level, that's of the residents that live within the community, not the, not the school district.
Right.
Right.
Thank you for terrifying.
Okay, for our next question. Didn't the district have a performance audit completed? What were the results of it?
Yeah, actually, in January of 2020, yeah, this past January, the state auditor's office presented that to, at a board meeting, and really, they'd been working on it for about six months before that. And again, why we were selected for that is they looked at our financial situation, looked at the five-year forecast, and, and how, this was done by the Ohio Auditor's Office, and really, wanted to come in and dig into our books and dig into our details and, and try, from their perspective, try to come up with solutions and ideas where we could save money, we could be more efficient and so forth. So, that's really the thrust of that. And again, this is the Ohio Auditor's Office, and because of our five-year forecast and the financial situation we were in, it was no cost to the school district that the Ohio Auditor's Office did this. So, they came up with about 12 recommendations, and some of them were staffing, some of them were putting off some Chromebook purchases, some were, I'm reading from somewhere, developing some plans for larger capital purchases, some future replacements for school buses, so having a fleet replacement strategy, facility maintenance, looking at our collective bargaining agreements, but also bringing down, so they looked at, what they did is they looked at our numbers, compared them to primary peer districts throughout the state. Those are, those are districts that are similar to us financially, district-wide, number of students in the district, but then also compared us to local districts right around us. And so, depending on what the comparisons were, they used either primary peer or the, or the, or the local peers. And so, when they did, you know, it's one of those, some of those things were, they wanted to do a reduction in nursing because we were a little higher than other school districts, and I guess it gets a situation like we're in right now in a pandemic that you really see that they're worth their weight in gold through this whole situation, and it probably, wouldn't have been the smartest thing to reduce something like that. So, that just speaks to, no offense to the auditors, but they're looking at numbers, dollars and cents. They aren't looking at how that would impact anything, and that wasn't their role either. They were just looking at comparisons and so forth. So, we would take those recommendations, and they were all recommendations. They weren't anything that we had to do, but we looked at those, and really, at the end of it, they, they couldn't find a lot of substantial savings. So, at the end, they essentially, and I'll just paraphrase here, they essentially, you need to reduce your staff by additional 10% to get to the savings that you needed because they couldn't assume a levy passage. And again, they also noted that if you did that, you're going to have to, your service levels would change in the school district. You can't do the same things that you've already been doing and offering and still have that, at the end of the day, still come out in the black on your five-year forecast. So...
Do you mind if I quote?
Sure, go ahead.
Quote their report?
Yeah, definitely.
I brought it up because of the question. It's a, from the auditor, it says, while these recommendations would result in cost savings, they would not even, if fully implemented, address the entire projected deficit in the most recent five-year forecast. The 12th recommendation included in this report, which you just mentioned.
Right.
Included in this report provides additional options which Belvoir Sugar Creek Local School District leadership would need to review in order to address the remaining deficit. These options could drastically change service levels within the district. So, you know, they acknowledge that we didn't, we didn't find enough, so you'll have to figure out something to cut your services way back.
Right, right. And unfortunately, we've had to already implement some of those things with our Phase 4 reductions of K-5 STEM and K-5 ART, and also sixth grade ART, the librarian. So, some of those things that we unfortunately already had, already had to start doing. Something I want to also focus on here that was in there, in that auditor report. David, you can help me just take this down.
What was that?
I have to.
Take that down, and then that thing just kind of, yep, and then you push it back.
Make sure you move your chair up before you sit down too, David.
Okay. Is it, it goes in the slot?
It goes in there?
There you go.
Right there. Watch yourself sitting down there.
Really?
We're using a combination tonight of high-tech technology and low-tech, low-tech technology is, you know, we're streaming this live, but, you know, it also is at some point good to just have low-tech technology here. So, on here are some of the things that were in the performance audit that I just want to point out. On the bottom here is the salary comparison. So, this is the salary comparison, and it's a different way, and I really didn't, I really didn't look at it this way before they came in and looked at it this way. They didn't look at just a moment in time or this year's average salaries or last year's salaries. They looked at the entire salary schedule and determined if, how they would, how someone would, what amount of money that they would make throughout their career given the salary schedule that we had. And so, it, so it kind of has an even playing field whether your, your staff is, is higher end on the average number of years in the school district or whether it's on the lower end. It really would impact that average. So, in all the areas except BA 150, bachelor's 150, we were lower than the peer districts. Those are the districts that are around us, and that's for the certified staff. And then the classified staff, they were lower than all the other local school districts. And again, they looked at local school districts around us because that's who you're competing with for jobs. They, they aren't going to compare us with somebody by Cleveland or Toledo. We're not competing with, with folks from Cleveland or Toledo over our, you know, our local job pool. So, that, that's one piece of this I think is extremely important, and probably this year with our pay freeze, again, unfortunately, for the pay freeze piece, but we're probably going to be lower in that area also. So, that's without the pay freeze. That's from last school year. I'm going to talk about the resident tax effort unless somebody else wants to. Okay, all right. So, the resident tax effort, that really is the resident's tax burden. So, that's based on how much property taxes they are paying, and that's compared to the wealth that is in, that they have within the community. And so, our tax burden is much lower than other districts around us. And so, that's even lower this year because, again, Beaver Creek and Centerville, they passed levies before this was, was, before this particular piece was from the performance audit. So, ours is going to be even lower. So, again, our tax burden, taking consideration, income levels and the actual taxes you are paying are lower than other communities around us. So, I just think that's another piece that's the auditors pointed out, and that's also in the district profile report that can be found on the Ohio Department of Education website. Anything else we want to add from the performance audit?
I just wanted to say that we like to, we like to say that it's good that the performance audit didn't find, really didn't find anything that where we're inefficient or way behind spending more money compared to other districts in our demographics. That was the good part. The bad part is that they couldn't find much of anything that we needed to operate more efficiently and could save a lot of money doing differently. It came down to the end where they said, well, here's how much money you need to cut. We couldn't find much of anything, so, you know, you need to do some drastic thing to come up with that, 10% across the board.
Right.
Which is a difficult to achieve.
Right.
You bet.
And again, some of the other things that, you know, we are implementing these, you know, preventive maintenance plan, the replacement of school buses plans, you know, that's a plan for that, plan for large capital purchases. But, you know, when push comes to shove, we can do as much planning as we, we want to for purchasing school buses or for capital improvements because, or preventive maintenance, however, if we don't have the money for those, and you have the greatest bus replacement procedure and plan that you want, but if you don't have the money to pay for the buses, the plan really isn't, isn't worth a lot. So, those are some of the things that we are definitely looking into and we are accomplishing. But again, to implement some of those things, we have to have the money to be able to do that.
Okay, for the next question. Since the levy has been voted down twice, would it make sense to offer a compromise levy? I would think that would increase the chances for passing, as is those opposed the first time will only be more committed to its failure.
That's a great question. Really, we were, we were asking just for what we, what we need, and with the reductions that we've already put in place, $4.8 million in reductions, we still, we still have that same need in the long term. We don't really want to be coming back to the voters for money every two or three years. So, this amount gives us opportunity to extend that out much further, and really, it, it gives us the opportunity to also have that, that reserve at the end of our five years that, that the auditors tell us we should really have. So, really, it's, it comes back to more asking for what we need and not really trying to ask for more.
Yeah, I think part of that compromise could be, you know, we, we've made $4.8 million in reductions. So, you know, those are things that we've done from 2018 to 2022. The all-staff have taken a pay freeze this school year. They've done a reduction in health benefits. You know, the other piece is since the levy didn't pass last year, we lost essentially a whole year of funding, $3.3 million or so dollars. So, you know, those are things that pretty substantially have to make up. And, you know, if we, if this levy does not pass in this, in November, then we lose a whole nother year of funding because again, and if you pass a levy this school year, you get that funding next school, or next calendar year. But if it doesn't pass, then we don't get anything until, what, 2022, if something would pass next year. So, the further it goes, the harder it gets to kind of dig yourself out of the hole, and the, the cuts get deeper and deeper to be able to do that. So, if there's anything else.
Yeah.
I would just say, I've always heard throughout my career that one of the worst things you can do is put a levy up that doesn't solve the problem, that amount, and then it passes, but you're still in a fiscal problem. Because you really need, as you said, David, to come back right away, you know, and then it looks like you may perhaps aren't a very good manager if you put a levy up and it passed, and a lot of the citizens felt like, you know, they came through for us and, but we're still in bad situations, so...
Yeah, at the end of the five-year forecast, so FY '25, I think Kevin, you were saying earlier that we're, what, 4.8 in the, without a levy? No, with a levy.
With a levy, we're $4.7 million in the black.
In the black at the end of FY '25, so...
Right, so, so we, I never want to state an amount of years.
Sure.
We were, this, we're hoping this will last X number of years because so many, as I said earlier, so many things can happen to change that and make you look like you weren't very good at predicting the future. at predicting the future. So you know, but with things remaining the same and that forecast remaining like it is there, it looks very good for us for quite a long period of time. And a lot of that, a good portion of that is because of the cutbacks we've made that we would not be reinstating.
Right.
It would remain as cutback.
Yeah. Again, we, we do our best to plan for as much as possible, but who could have planned for a worldwide pandemic and a, you know, $650,000 in reductions from our state funding last fiscal year and this fiscal year? You know, that was, you know, if you'd have said that in February, it'd have been crazy to think that. So it just, so there's only so many things that you can, only so many things you can control, and we're doing our best to make our best educated guess.
Okay, for our next question. What was the student-to-teacher ratio in the years of 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020? And what was the student enrollment in each of those years?
I can answer that. So again, the, so it says student-to-teacher ratio. So that, to me, that is different than class sizes. Because when you're looking at student-teacher ratios, I know when they were doing this in performance audit, I believe it was around 19 or so was the student-teacher ratio. And what they do though is they essentially add up all the people that are teachers and then divide that by the number of students you have, and that's the student-teacher ratio. But you got to remember, within that are, are specials teachers, electives teachers, especially at the K-5 level where, you know, those specials teachers were in there, intervention specialist, or maybe it's a high-need special ed room where there's a much lower number of students in there. So it really doesn't paint an accurate picture, which I don't want to assume what this person is asking, but the student-teacher ratio is probably going to be less than true average class sizes. So class sizes, again, they're anywhere from probably the low twenties to high twenties to low thirties, depending on what grade level it is, what year it is, what class it is, especially just grade six to 12 level. You know, I know there, at the middle school last year, I think there was an algebra class of about 33 or so. But I know there were some other classes that were about 20. So it depends on what class it is. But we do take a look at those, just for example, last, not this school year, last school year, we took a look at the numbers coming in the third grade. So K-5, or I'm sorry, 1 to 5, we typically have eight teachers in each grade level. We took a look at our numbers coming into last year in the third grade, and they were a little lower than the other grade levels. So we didn't do eight teachers, we only had seven teachers. And again, those class sizes were maybe a little larger than grades 1, 2, 4, and 5, but they weren't astronomically larger. So enough that we could say, "We're going to only have seven teachers in here." So we do take a look at those numbers coming in and seeing if we can, almost say get by with, with one less teacher. But just because it's always what we've done is have eight teachers doesn't mean that's what we're going to do next school year. So the other piece of that, the numbers, that enrollment numbers, so we actually are not at our highest ever. 2006 is about our highest enrollment ever, and I know that really surprises people when I tell them that. They see all the housing around the community and say, "Whoa, you guys must be booming, and you guys must be out of room," and whatever else. And that's not the case. Like I said, 2006 is our highest enrollment numbers, and we're about 87 students less than last year. So we're at about 2640 this year. Last year, we were about 2727. And so those numbers are in the 26, 2700 range, probably for the last 15 to 20 years. And again, that's probably because, I'm just assuming, it's probably because people are upgrading housing. So you know, they go from maybe a smaller house in Belvoir, Shur Creek and maybe upgrade to a larger. So it really determines who's going to come into that smaller house of whether our numbers are going to increase or not. But that's, yeah.
But from a community perspective, a lot of people come and then they want to stay.
Sure.
So you know, and your kids graduate, you know, and in that scenario, my kids are graduated from the schools, but you know, we're still staying in the community. You'll have a lot of those folks.
Yep, yep.
And you might want to address, like, we're down 87 kids this year, but the major reason for that would be the pandemic, right?
I would assume it's the pandemic. Yeah, they don't really give a reason of why, but they either maybe other alternatives or they moved or don't know about the 87. But it's, like I said, it's been pretty steady, 26, 27, 50, somewhere in that range over the last 15 or so years. It's really been in that range. And over that time, you know, especially since 2018, we've had 33 positions open. We have not replaced 33 positions. 17 of those have been teaching positions. So again, as our numbers stay fairly even, our staff continues to go down in a vast majority of our areas. There are some areas that we are bound federally by law that we can't reduce. You know, that could be a lot of times special ed classes that, you know, we can't say, "We can't do X, Y, and Z." So some of those things are out of our control of those spending pieces or staff pieces. I don't know if there's anything else to add to that one? Okay.
Hey, for the next question.
Yep.
I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer this, but the district has put out a lot of information to the community in the past about the levy. It's also held meetings to discuss it. Why do people keep on saying they don't know anything about the levy?
That's a great question. I'm not sure I have an answer for that one.
I don't know if I have an answer for that.
Oh, my.
I guess, you know, we are doing our best to try to get out as much information as possible. So again, that's why we sent out the postcard last week. That's why we have an issue at the bridge coming up in the next few weeks here. Because again, those things go out to all of our community members. We, we can get information out to students and their parents because we have their email addresses. However, you know, other community members who have a stake in this also of having a well-educated youth and a great community, they have a stake in this also. We try our best to get that information out. You know, something like we're doing tonight, the virtual town hall meeting is another way we try to inform people. We have, in this last school year, we were doing coffee with the superintendent. We're informally meeting, and most of the times, a board member would be with me during those times where we just informally chat with community residents either about the levy or about anything else going on. We've now transitioned that to a socially-distanced, friendly tailgate talk where we're outside in front of Bell Creek Intermediate. And, but the same concept is, community members can come and ask questions or can talk and get informed about it. So we're, we're doing our best to get information out there. But you know, we're all available to ask, to answer questions. I know Mr. Graham is able to ask, you know, to answer questions, you know, give him a phone call. He's extremely easy to get ahold of, and we'll get back to you in a very timely manner. So I guess all that information is out there and there's resources out there. So if anybody out there knows a way where we can get even more information out there to folks, we're open to it.
Absolutely.
Definitely, definitely.
Also, last year, we did a lot of in-house coffees. And probably eight to 10 of those.
Yep.
That was another attempt.
Right. Just trying to get that information out there so that people can, can become educated about the facts of the levy and make whatever decision that they make. But to at least be armed with all the facts and the information or be able to ask questions. I know Mr. Liming and I, we had a few folks who had a bunch of questions about finances, levy, and we sat down and talked with them and be more than happy to do that, so. Okay.
Okay, for the next question. Several people have asked a similar type question, so I'm going to put them all together with this question. It says, "You've discussed what classes, subjects, services will most likely come back if the levy passes. What specific additional cuts will be made if the levy fails? If you cannot answer this tonight, when will you? Early voting and absentee ballots are coming upon us. People need to know prior to their ability to vote."
Okay. And Mr. Carpenter, can you help me again there?
While you're preparing for this too, I just wanted to remind people that the questions ended at 6:30 when you could submit questions. We still have a few coming in. So 6:30 was the cutoff, so we'd be sure to answer the questions that come in.
I think we got it.
Okay. Be careful sitting down.
Yeah, really. Let's light up the back.
All right. Thank you. So again, this has information on, let's go over both of those. So what if the November levy passes? Again, I think the key piece to that is it's going to provide some financial stability for the school district. I think that is a huge piece of this whole thing. But the board also agreed at the last board meeting to reinstate Phase Four reductions such as K-5 STEM and art this school year, the rest of the 85 supplementals that are for this school year. That's the sports club, sports clubs and advisors, two full-time librarians, and the high school busing as soon as we have enough trained drivers. And we say that because right now we have zero sub-bus drivers, and it takes anywhere from six weeks to three months to properly train a bus driver. So you just can't overnight, you know, because we would have to have probably three or four additional routes if we added the high school busing back in. So we would need some time to make sure those people are properly trained. And then also, next school year, we would add back sixth-grade art. So what if November levy does not pass? I guess the biggest thing is the $4.8 million in reductions are going to stay in place. So those things that we already reduced, it's going to be kind of status quo of where those things are at. And at this point, we don't have anything slated to be reduced if the levy does not pass after November. But what it will do however, though, is any decisions we make going forward are going to be financially, through a financial, hyper-financial lens, and those are going to be the first kind of pass-through and filter rather than unfortunately, is this a great program to do or is this a great program to keep? And that's, we have built, and I guess Mary France said this a few meetings back, is we have spent years and years building up all these great programs that we have. What other school has K-5 STEM? I mean, it's just a fantastic experience for our students and, you know, but it's, it's, you know, at some point, you can't have all of those extras. And so we would be at status quo, but we would look even more succinctly and focused on the financial pieces rather than, rather than the educational piece. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything to that.
And that's a sad, sad commentary, really, that we would have to look specifically at financial components as compared to the educational and beneficial components of what we offer for students.
Right, right. But again, that's, that's kind of the fiscal reality we would be in without a levy, without a levy passage. But again, this information will be coming out shortly, but obviously we covered it tonight.
Okay, a couple people brought in a question in this same, similar story as well, so I'm combining this one. Wouldn't it be better for us to just convince the state to fund all school districts to the full amount they need?
Yes, that would be great. That would be great. And also at the federal level, you know, we have a lot of mandates from the federal level that are, that are really focused on special education, and those programs are extremely valuable and worthwhile. But the federal government only funds some of those programs at about 17 to 20% of what they actually cost. So you know, it would be great if the state and the feds did fund those, but as we've seen through these reductions and the budgets, that, that's not reality. And it's probably been 20, 25 years ago with DeRough versus Ohio of properly funding school districts. Again, that was more focused on actually a poorer communities, but still the same concept that the state wasn't properly funding school districts. And essentially, the Supreme Court said, "Yes, this is unconstitutional, but legislators, it's up to you to implement those, implement that because you have the, essentially the strings to the purse strings there." And so it's up to legislators to be able to do that. I know myself and actually the other Greene County superintendents, we meet with our state representatives twice a year. We contact them more than that, but we meet, sit down with them twice a year, and school funding is always one of the issues that we bring up. And I mean, at this point, it's, things have not had any movement in the state legislature. We actually brought in Representative Cup, who now is Speaker Cup, Representative Cup last December to talk about a revised funding formula for students. And it was a very good presentation. However, it was still based on, right now, you know, it was still based on property wealth, but they added in income level. Well, that doesn't help out our community either. So even though there was a new formula there, it was still, it wouldn't have helped a community like ours. And I guess the key piece of that is it added additional money, but they didn't earmark where that additional money would come from. And obviously, now it's going the opposite direction with all these state cuts. So I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything more to that about why does this district, state, help?
Yeah, help us fund it? Well, I think the state has also demonstrated that they're not really reliable for being able to provide the funding. And another, another reason why funding it at the local level, at least the part that we have, is more, or can be more reliable than what the state can provide for us, so.
Again, even if we go in the red, and Kevin, I don't know if you want to add to this, you know, if we go into the red, the state's not going to give us the money.
Right.
To do that. They would.
Their idea is to meet with us before that happens, as we know, in our forecast, and have, us have board-approved cuts that will be made before that happens.
Right.
Slash and burn.
Right, "We're going to help you cut your program," is their response to something like that.
Yeah.
And really, I don't know if the question is, "Why don't they?" I mean, it's about like the other question of, "Why don't, why are there people that don't know facts about the levy as much as we've worked on it?" I'm not sure why they don't help us. There are a lot of theories on that, but the fact is, they don't. And there's no outcry, as you said, at the state level to pour a lot of money into a school district that's considered to be wealthy by their standards, the residential.
Here, next question. How long will it take to recover from the cuts we've had to make? Will we just bounce back to where we were before the levy failed the first time?
How long will it take to bounce back from these cuts? Well, that's a good question. I mean, the, so we've, we're going to institute a few of these Phase Four cuts, reductions this school year if the levy does pass. But we're not bringing back those other Phase Three reductions because that would accelerate the expenditures on a much higher level and would really force us to have to come back to the voters even sooner. So you know, besides those Phase Four reductions, we're kind of holding steady on those other reductions that we have made. Because if we don't, then the future financial, you know, is really at, at stake there.
Depending upon exactly what that question meant, it might mean, how long would it take the district to recover financially if the levy passes? And in that case, like you already mentioned, that would be a great recovery. We would be able to go all the way through the forecast and hopefully beyond with the carryover that we need.
Right.
Also, given the fact that we're not going to reinstate a good portion of these cuts that we've made over the last couple of the years. So our, our annual spending deficit that occurred for a few years, hopefully wouldn't happen in the future. We'd be able to level off our balances.
Right.
Okay, next question. Can't we wait until this pandemic is over to ask for a levy or wait until spring?
Again, I.
I'm going to say if we.
Yeah, go ahead.
It would cost us another $3.3 million to wait because that would be a lack of that revenue for all of 2021. So we would essentially be digging ourselves into the hole deeper than we all, deeper than we already are.
Right.
So waiting, waiting doesn't help us.
Right. You know, to a certain extent, it's up to the school district to determine the need and to then have that need expressed to the community through a levy, and it's up to the, to the community to decide whether they're going to support. the community to decide whether they're going to support that levy or not. Now, again, we want everybody to have the facts and the information out there so they can make an educated decision, but it's our, our job to communicate it and have that information, and then it's up to the community to say whether they're going to support that or not.
Okay, our next question is, how is our tax rate compared with other school districts around us?
One last one here, Mr. Carpenter. All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Give us one second here.
Come on. Oh, not quite. There.
Okay. Be careful sitting down.
Yep. Don't fall off the back.
So actually, when we look at our tax rates, and again, this was in the bridge last year, going to be in the bridge again this time around, but when you look at the tax rates 2019, again, this is based off $100,000 house and $50,000 income. So again, you have to, you have to prepare apples to apples. If yours isn't $100,000 house or $50,000 income, then you'd have to, you know, change it. But again, it's apples-to-apples comparison, I think, is the key piece to this. So if you do that, and this is, when I, when I show this information to people, they're really surprised by this. Shore Creek Township and Bellbrook City are the lowest in the area. Beaver Creek is right behind us, and then it goes all the way up to Oakwood City and the totals down there. So we're actually the lowest in the area. Now, if you, this does include a city income tax and the school income tax. So if you take out the city income tax, you just deal with the school district income taxes, we are actually third and fourth. So Xenia is the lowest, Fairborn's the second lowest, and then Shore Creek Township and then Bellbrook. So, you know, when you just take into the school count, we are, we're one of the lowest, not the lowest, but we are one of the lowest. Again, you obviously have to take that into account of what house, how much your house is appraised at, and also how much income you have to determine how those things factor to you. But that's how our tax rates compare to other school districts around us. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything or not? Good, okay.
And next question. How much extra money has the district received from the governor because of the coronavirus?
Received?
Yes.
We did, we did receive.
From the governor?
From the government.
Oh, from the.
Oh, government.
Government.
Oh, okay.
Um, what would we say?
Right at $300,000.
About $300,000?
Right, and one was $160-some thousand. I don't have the exact number, but the other one was $130-some.
Right.
Was that from federal, though? Isn't it?
That was from the feds. That's from the federal. Yep, that's from the federal. Yep. And so, so the interesting way to look at that is that with the federal money, it's all based on the poverty level within a school district and the wealth of the property owners within that school district and the poverty level. So in low-poverty school districts from the federal government, that's us, low-poverty school district, we received a little bit of money. Now, at the state level, they took it inversely for what kind of reduction we were going to get. So those school districts that were, had a low poverty level had a bigger cut. So we had a net loss on all of that, of all of our state cuts and then the federal coronavirus aid or so forth. Other school districts in a higher poverty level, in a high-poverty level school district, they're inverse of that. They received a lot of money from the federal government, and they, their reductions from the state were much lower. So they actually had money to implement some of the things that we're doing with coronavirus and whether it's programs, whether it's cleaning supplies, disinfectant, they had money to do that. We actually inversely did not have money. We're tapping money out of the general fund to pay for those things. I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that? Yeah.
Very well explained.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, our next question, you've alluded to this earlier. How do our teachers' salaries compare to others around us?
Yeah, I talked about that earlier on the chart up here, that I won't make Mr. Carpenter switch out again. He's done a great job, but we won't switch that out again. But they're lower than all the, except the BA, Bachelor's 150 column. We're lower compared to the other salaries around us. Again, we aren't looking at an average salary because that is one moment in time, and just because we have a veteran staff, which I think in most industries, in most areas, and I would say it's in education too, we want an experienced staff. We want experienced staff working with your children. And so, you know, those average salaries may be higher than other districts, but it's because we have a more veteran teaching staff. But if you look at our salary schedule, our salary scales, they are lower for teacher and for classified staff. So, you know, the salary schedule is lower than other areas around us. There was something else I was going to say, and I can't remember what it is. I don't know if anybody else want to add anything for that particular piece?
We certainly want to have a veteran teaching staff, you know, because, you know, veterans that help guide and mentor, you know, new teachers, because new teachers coming in are certainly are at the low end of the scale, but they're also low on experience, high on enthusiasm.
Right.
But, you know, low on that experience, and it's good to have, you know, the veteran teachers to be able to mentor, center them along.
And the positive part of that, of course, is that they love to work here, so we don't get people very often bolting for another school district to leave us. So therefore, they eventually wind up as one of the most experienced people or one of the most experienced staffs around.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you know, in the business world, that the cost of turnover of your staff is an extremely high cost. There's a high cost to turnover of your staff, not only financially, but within your wherewithal and your experience and how things work and so forth. But the other thing that I remember what I wanted to talk about is, it's STRS. So STRS is our State Teacher Retirement System. And so as a school district, we have to pay into that, and teachers pay into that. And SERS is the support staff equivalent to that. But let's talk about STRS. And so that's our State Teachers Retirement System. So a few years ago, they were having some, again, I think they have to go 30 or 40, 50 years out and to make sure they have enough funds to fund everybody in their pension plan. I'm not sure, is it 30 or 50? It's somewhere in that range, some, really long out. But they were, they were not hitting their marks that they needed to hit. So what they did is they are forcing teachers and anybody that's certified to work longer, pay in more, and get less in retirement. So let me, let me say that again. They, you have to work longer, pay in more to the system, and then get less in retirement. So that's what happened. They went from 10%, we were paying in, to 14%. They went into STRS, and those are mandated things that go to STRS. We don't deal with those at the local level, but we have to pay into those. And then I also raised the retirement ages for full retirement, where before, I believe it was around 30 years of experience at any age. Now you have to be age 60 and at least 35 years in education to get full benefits. So what are the ramifications of that? At the local level, that means teachers and staff are forced, whether they, whether they want to or not, and we have teachers that really want to, however, they're forced to teach longer, but that also then raises our salaries at something out of our control that someone at the state level, STRS mandated to us. And so that's something else that plays a piece in this, because I know in the past, a lot of folks, they retired at 30 years, and now we have seven extra years, five to seven extra years of people at their highest salary based on retirement system, and we have no control over that.
I'm going to stick with the salary questions here. It says, "The district staff took a pay freeze, both for merit, experience, and base pay for the fiscal year 21. How will the school district handle retroactive pay for these freezes? Will there be any, and for what pay areas?"
There's no retroactive pays for those areas.
Okay, simple question. Answer. Next one. Tell us a little bit about the unfunded or underfunded mandates.
I think I can handle that one. A lot of people surprisingly don't know what unfunded and underfunded mandates are. These are requirements from the state and federal government for our school district that are either not funded at all or are only partially funded. And we made a list of the six largest ones and how much they cost the district. Just quickly read some of these. College Credit Plus, that's a program where high school students can go to college if they meet certain requirements, and they can have their textbooks and I believe their tuition paid by the school district. That's costing us about $93,000 a year. English Language Learner Program, for those that English is not their, their primary language, $103,000. Preschool, about $415,000 annually. Charter and Community Schools, the state funding lost when our students leave and go to those schools in the area, $250,000. Gifted Education, $381,000. And then Special Education, not including gifted, because some people put that in as special, $2,400,000 a year. And so in total, those top six cost our district about $3.6 million. And it seems like that as years go on, the number of unfunded and partially funded mandates just increase.
And let's, let's be sure to mention that these are, these are worthwhile programs. These are extremely worthwhile, are very beneficial to our student. So extremely beneficial. However, the mandates by the state and the federal governments, they mandate you to do something, and then they don't fully fund it. For example, the College Credit Plus one is a great example of this, that state legislators and in state law, we cannot say no to someone wanting to take a college course, for example, in high school. They have the right to take that. We can't say no to that, and we have to pay for it also. So it's free to the parents, it's free to the student, and it's great that it's free for the parent and the student, but there's nothing free in general about it because the school district pays for that. So yes, it's free to the parent, but someone is picking up that tab, and it's the school district that's picking up that tab, and we can't say no to that. So again, very worthwhile program. However, you know, the state, again, this is one of those pieces, why, why doesn't the state help? You know, these are another examples of, they don't, they not only don't help, they're heading the wrong direction with things, that they mandate a bunch of things to do for us that we have to do, and then don't provide us the money to do them.
Next question. Are the increased class sizes that negatively impact the ability to properly social distance in the midst of a global pandemic due to the failure of the levy?
Say that again?
Are the increased class sizes due to the failure of the levy? Is it in a nutshell? But, and the reason that's a concern is because we, it's impacting our ability to properly social distance.
Any of the, any of the class size reduction, or the reductions in staff and so forth are due to the levy. Yes. And so, you know, as for social distancing, we're doing the best that we possibly can with social distancing and wearing of masks during the school day. So, you know, but those reductions were put into place before, or are due because of the levy failure.
So the next question's related to this. It says, "How will the district address the still increasing class sizes if the levy passes or if it fails? 25 first graders is always too many in a class, but especially in our current situation. Most districts with in-person learning in the area are decreasing the number of students to better facilitate both learning and social distancing."
So we're kind of holding steady right now on our class sizes, and where we're at right now is where our class sizes in the near future are going to be. You know, what other school, what other school districts are doing? It really depends, a lot of factors in that. Two factors, two biggest factors are the number of kids that are going online in that school district. But the other factor is where was their staffing at before the pandemic? And if they had a lot more flexibility in their staffing and their staffing ratios were much higher, then they're able to better kind of adjust and absorb those reductions. Where we were already in our fourth phase of reductions, and our class, our number of staff were even much smaller. And then you add in, we had about 22% of our, our students choose the online piece, and then we had to, we used our own staff to facilitate those in-person, or I'm sorry, those online learners. So those also essentially made the class sizes about the same as they would have been if there wasn't a pandemic and we weren't offering this online piece.
And here's our final question that got in before 6:30 tonight, is, can you explain exactly how the $4.8 million in cuts was calculated?
So in summer 2018, we had about $500,000 worth of reductions. And so that was for teachers, a part-time mechanic, and reductions in budgets and building and technology. We eliminated all day, every day kindergarten scholarships, and we went to part-time roles and payroll clerk and manager of business. And then June of 2019, Phase 1 reductions were about $813,000. So two teachers, positions were eliminated or reduced, two technology aides, which is really a challenge in this whole area. Our half, half of our technology department has been reduced prior to all this, and we're using obviously a lot more technology with the online learning and piece. The high school digital academy, middle school custodian, part-time cafeteria aides, full-time, five full-time bus drivers, and again, further reductions in building, technology, and athletics, postponing purchase of the buses. So that was in June of 2019. Later in summer of 2019, another $168,000 reduction, so two teachers we didn't replace. One of those is a high school Spanish, the other was, as I mentioned earlier, that third grade teaching position. If you remember earlier talking about that, also a decrease in insurance benefits. Now we're in Phase 2 of reductions. Those were in, I think, November of 19. That was the 0% raise for all the staff, or 0% pay freeze. Also eliminating about three certified positions through attrition. So that was about $1 million. And then Phase 3 and Phase 4 reductions. So with it all that, we had a gifted teacher at BCI, world language teachers at the middle school, high school English teacher at the high school, and then also a Phase 4 reduction of high school social studies teacher, high school science teacher, elementary art, elementary STEM, four more bus drivers, and a couple media specialists, librarians, and then those 85 supplemental. So you add all those up, and that is $4.8 million and 33 positions of those that have been eliminated, and then 17 of those are certified. So that's how we came up with $4.8 million. Again, I've mentioned these.
Multiple times.
I want to say at every board meeting, but almost every board meeting. I mentioned, try not to go through that much of detail at each board meeting, but that's how we got to the $4.8 million reduction.
And I might, might add, not only were we cutting bus drivers, but we're cutting transportation itself to high school and.
Right.
And the two-mile minimum.
Right. Again, that goes directly into, there's no program or services if there's not a staff member behind that. So you eliminate the staff member, that program or that service is no longer there anymore.
Okay, that's it in our questions that have come in.
Okay. Anybody want to add anything or anything else? Okay. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, Mr. Graham. Really appreciate you being here tonight, Ms. Sigmund, for facilitating with the questions over there. And again, I want to thank all of you out there that were tuning in tonight. Hopefully you had, found out a lot of useful information. And again, I just want to reiterate, we have, we have another virtual town hall meeting very similar to this on October 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then we also have tailgate talks, as I was mentioning previously. Our next one is September 28th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Last time was in the, in the morning, this time it's in the evening for those folks that are working during the day. And that's from 6:00 to 7:00 in front of BCI. Again, social COVID-19 protocols are in place of social distancing, mask and so forth at that. And then, and also you can reach out to any one of us in email or a phone call. Again, we have very useful information on the Bellbrook website. It's a tab right at the top, Levy, Levy Info. So all that information is on there also. So again, thank you very much for tuning in tonight, and have a great rest of the evening.
Thanks.